Okay, so for the recording. Back up. So, good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington's Attorney Board of Appeals. I call this meeting of the board to order. We have previously gone through the list of members and checked off that all members are present and officials and consultants are present as well. Have read through the introductory remarks. So for this meeting, so this meeting was originally intended to be a Zoom webinar on the account that we have been using for deliberations in the past. Unfortunately, that account is the same account that the select board uses for their meetings. And so they have priority over us for that account. And so they are using that right now. So for that reason, we had to effectively shift rooms to the room we're in now, which is not a webinar room. However, the reasons for using the webinar room, which I will review in a minute, is essentially because after the close of the public hearing on a 40B or comprehensive permit case, the board is not allowed to take additional testimony from any parties, both for the applicant side, for the town side, our consultants, the public, we are limited to the information that has come before us during the open hearing. And so this evening, that rule still applies, even though we are in a different format. So I really ask everyone's indulgence to please, you know, that we need to limit the conversations to what goes on tonight to just the members of the board and not to open that up to the outside. So before I move us on to the meeting of tonight's meeting, I do see, I do have one hand up from the public. So I will go ahead and take that question so long as it relates to the format of the meeting rather than to the content of the meeting. Mr. Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It does indeed relate to the mechanics of the meeting. I wanted to first remind you to start recording. And then to let you know that the email had come through, to me at least, from Julie Wayman with the correct link. So thank you for for getting that done.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting us know. Okay, there's no one else in the waiting room right now. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the sole item on our agenda this evening, which is the resumption of the discussion of the decision on the comprehensive permit for Thorndike Place. So at our October 20th, 2021 public hearing, the board voted unanimously to close the public hearing for Thorndike Place. This marked the end of the acceptance of testimony and new information in regards to the project. It also initiated a 40-day period for the board to consider and render a decision. On October 28th, 2021, the board initiated its deliberations. They were continued on November 3rd, 11th, 16th, and 18th, and we are continuing them again this evening. Tonight's discussions and deliberations are being held openly and publicly, but the board is unable to accept comment from the applicant, the board's peer review consultants, the town, or the public. For this reason, tonight's meeting would usually have been held using the webinar platform, which allows the board to limit who may participate in the discussion. On behalf of the board, I appreciate everyone's understanding and everyone's cooperation in maintaining that same rule this evening. The board will resume its discussion using the draft decision available on tonight's agenda. It can be differentiated by the text in the footer noting an 111820 runword vision date. And the board will briefly just review the revisions proposed at the previous meeting and resume the discussions. At the end of tonight's meeting, the board may either vote on the final decision or vote to continue the meeting to continue its deliberations. Under state regulations, the board must issue a decision by November 30th or request an extension from the applicant to further continue its deliberations. With that. Head and share my screen. And so Rick, while I have the screen up, I may not be able to follow when new participants are coming into the waiting room. If you could keep an extra eye out for that for me.
I am, Mr. Chairman. I'm on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is so this is effectively the same document that's on the website. It does have some additional proposed edits, which I have added based on my further reading of the decision again today and some additions that at the end of the prior meeting, we had requested members of the board to submit. But any changes are marked as changes. So we had, so last time we had gone through all of the findings, we had identified some that needed revision. And we had also talked again about the conditions and about the waivers. And so tonight, I was just going to go ahead and run down the whole document from beginning to end, capturing everything that we have noticed and proposed for change. And we'll just go through those. So up here, the top, nothing has changed. One question I had for Mr. Haverty on number three, there's a complete listing of all the dates of the public hearings. And I wasn't sure if we needed to add the dates of the deliberation to that.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need to list the dates of the deliberations.
Okay. Let's go away. On number six, there are, there's one or two places in the document where we're still referring to the parcels, the MUGR property. So I thought it was important that we include a reference as to what we mean when we say MUGR property. That's him up. Fair assessment. Okay. Go ahead and accept that. Number 12. This just being more specific about when the board had requested the applicant consider reintroduction of the duplex units. So we had said spring, but it was actually April is a more a more appropriate term. So we're just going to go ahead and do that. That, and then this next one, there was an extra space in the sentence in the paragraph. Sorry. So go ahead. Except that one as well. Which takes us through the first set that we're into the jurisdictional findings. Then the factual findings, this is the main portion of the findings. There's a location. Description item 21. So this is the paragraph that outlines how we are going to be treating the, how we're going to be organizing the discussion of the rest of the findings. And so Mr. Hanlon had recommended a change to the flooding in wetlands. So it had read the neighborhood of the proposed project is subject to severe and repeated flooding. And much of the property subject to the application consists of wetland subject. And then he's recommending a change to the neighborhood of the approved project, which is how it's referenced in the rest of the document. Experiences severe and repeated flooding and much of the property consists of wetlands subject not only to state regulation. Mr. Hanlon.
I just want to hasten to assure people that it's called the approved project because if we approve this decision, it will become the approved project. If we didn't approve it, then of course it would be the rejected project. So the use of the word approved project here is just based on the posture of the thing. It doesn't have any, it is not intended to give any hints as to where we're going. So nobody should go out and buy stock based on this.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this from the board? None. Go ahead and accept that. And then G on open space and property management, I would just was going to change just capitalized conservation parcel because it is a becomes a defined term in that document. 22, need for affordable housing. One important indication of the shortfall in affordable housing. I think it's more proper than of affordable housing, shortfall in rather than shortfall of. If I have a and then farther down, the state subsidizing has an inventory for which the town is at 5.64% as of 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I wonder whether we should just say was there. It seems odd to say is and then have a date from five years ago.
Mr. Chairman, in order to clarify that, you might want to state that the town subsidized housing inventory as of the date of the filing of the comprehensive permit application was at 5.64%. So that clarifies why we're using the 2016 date. And you could probably get rid of the as of 2016.
So one important indication of the shortfall in affordable housing in Arlington is the percentage of low and moderate income units as compared to the state subsidized housing inventory as of the date of the comprehensive permit application was at 5.64%. So go ahead and accept that and just see what it looks like. As compared to the state subsidizing housing as of the day that comes up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
After inventory, perhaps insert the word wit. Seems like we're missing a word inventory, which as of the date.
As such? Looks fine to me. Okay, great. Thank you. I was feeling a little stunted there. Not sure why it's flagging something in this sentence. An extra space or something originally. 24. For units of senior housing. Again, not sure why. Brings us up to the flooding and wetlands section. 25 is okay, 26, we're just clarifying when the Weston and Sampson memorandum was prepared, which is January 2021. On behalf of the Arlington Land Trust. And then Mr. Hanlon, we're keeping the the footnotes correct.
One that is still in here. Yeah.
Okay. 27, in response to board's request, on October 4th, 2021, the applicant's engineer Conession submitted a memorandum on flooding mitigation measures, summarizing the evidence in the record on which the project would exacerbate the flooding in the, that the surrounding community experiences already. The board asked its peer review consultants, Beta to review the applicant's conclusions. This peer review flood, not floor, but flood mitigation memorandum was received on October 8th, 2021. So this just clarifies which documents we're referring to in the same. But we're not changing the meaning of it at all. That's of A. So the sense, this first sentence here in red, this is a question that we had just wanted to make sure that we were certain that we had wanted to include all this. And we were curious as to whether we had a specific reaction from Beta Group in response to this question, which we do not have. Never response to the document in general, but not to this one specific point. And then I was just going to change part to portion. So only a very small portion of the project area currently drains. Accept that. Also change the color of that back. Change that change. This has, again, this has a footnote which we had previous, none of the footnotes have been accepted yet. So that's just why they're all flagged. They're not changed specifically from before, but they just have never been accepted. Do that. Two. And then B, the project area experiences stream flooding as well. This last sentence, it was recommended by Mr. Handler that we included instead of being in the paragraph itself that we included as a footnote. Do I have that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. Question about that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Never mind. Who is draw?
This is this is times to go into the should be touched around 10. So this is the same section under E. The NOAA 14 data was requested by the commission, but it was also requested by the board. So I wanted to make sure to clarify that. And under F, the board takes note the observation, the applicant's engineer, construction project may provide an opportunity for the town to clear its existing cement of vegetation and increase the capacity of the municipal stormwater system to reduce the likelihood of localized flooding in the future. And then there's a request in the footnote, the stormwater management and standards should be, should this second management be capitalized as well?
Chairman, I think it should. That was my recommendation.
Okay. Anyway. Do both of them. Bring this down to 29. Added a comma for clarity. Four, 35 brings us to the climate change and resiliency section. A footnote. Yes, sir.
Just I think it would be probably better if back when the Weston and Sampson memorandum first came up, we just put parentheses around, rounded and said the Weston and Sampson memorandum. And then every time it comes up afterwards, you can just say the Western and Sanson memorandum and not have, and you don't have to recite it completely.
That's something we want to go back and
I, I think that I would say that correcting that is something you could just do administratively.
Okay. So at number 40. This is changing apartments to senior living building and duplexes. So it includes everything involved in the project here. The key issue is whether the project design is sufficient to protect the persons and property of residents of the proposed senior living building and duplexes as well as neighbors. Just wanted to clarify for for people who can read, who might be reading this or not as familiar with the terms. So the site and chair provided calculation showing the imposition of the new basements into the water table would not cause any mounding or raised elevation of groundwater. And that's just to clarify the meaning of mounding in this case. Then it brings us net zero policy. In February 2021, the town adopted a net zero action plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as much as possible and remove or offset any remaining pollution by 2050. And I believe Mr. Hanlon, that's to adopt the same language as in the net zero action plan. Looked here on mute, sir.
That's correct. The language comes directly from the plan.
Down in 45 was just the addition of a comma after hearing. leads to the traffic and transportation section.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mills.
Session 47 line, the last line.
Yep.
I think it needs the word for between has and the I think it helps it read better.
Board hopes, however, the applicant will approach the duplexes with the same enlightened perspective, perspective as it has for the senior housing. Thank you very much for that. 48. So just including a little bit more context to some of these and including some distances. So the approved project enjoys relatively convenient access to the AOWF MBTA station at 0.7 miles, the Minuteman Bike Way at 0.4 miles and to several bus routes, 0.3 miles to Route 2, 0.6 miles to Mass Ave. Any objection to that? No. Effect on the roadway network. Bunch of footnotes. And then down here, the AI reports calculated queuing lengths of one to four vehicles residents testify to much longer queues today. And just today doesn't really help. So quest was to remove that word. 62. Adding a couple of commas. So feel free to take the position in a 40B case where it must comma as a matter of law, comma give heavy weight to the regional need. And then incremental impact. End of 65. In essence, Lake Street is so severely impaired that the additional traffic generated by the approved project has little additional impact as opposed to has a little impact on the extent of the crisis. So I think that's better. Or less. That 66, 66A was originally not surprisingly, the queuing data, just changing into the queuing data. And accepting footnotes. Seven, added here. Footnote. Note and accept. Then C16 is again adding a footnote. Footnote is down here. And then we have this table, which I guess we did not accept yet. That's why it's not popping in right. Effect on quality of life. And 70, we're just changing paddle tennis to pickleball. And proposes to address traffic impacts here. We just added the underline. A change. So 74 is a new paragraph. So it was recommended by the Arlington Transportation Advisory Committee in its report dated January 6th, 2021. The board finds that due to the traffic impacts on the neighborhood streets between Lake Street and the perentrick location, particularly Little John Street, Dorothy's Dorothy Road and Birch Street. A post-development monitoring study is necessary to identify whether future traffic calming measures are needed to mitigate impacts on the neighborhood streets and what measures would be desirable. So this was something that the Transportation Advisory Committee, the TAC, had recommended the board consider. Is there anyone on the board has a question about that proposed finding? Nope. Neighborhood compatibility. We'll get down to 78. Senior living building. Senior living building would be among the largest apartment developments in Arlington and one of the few, if not the only one not connected to a collector or arterial street without the need to access a local residential street network. Question about that one? No. Seventy-nine. So this is a essentially a replacement of what was here before. So what's your before is now and strike through. And so the revised, the proposed text is properties located within the planned unit development, P U D zoning district. In this district, duplexes are allowed as a right and a multifamily housing building is conditionally allowed. Height of the proposed buildings would be within the limits allowed in the P U D district. The duplexes at three stories and thirty-eight point one-three feet from the first floor elevation to the ridge are a little taller than the buildings on neighboring properties, especially those on the other side of Dorothy Road, which are subject to height limits of two point five stories and thirty-five feet. The duplexes have reintroduced to the project plan, were reintroduced to the project plan at the request of the select board and have generally been well received by butters and other neighbors. The duplexes serve as a buffer between the lower density residential neighborhood and the higher density senior residential building. Their height, by better concealing the senior residences, actually makes the duplexes more effective in their buffering function. Any question about what the intent of this is?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Only part I'm a little uncomfortable with is the comment on that they were well received by a butters and other neighbors. I don't know if I'm comfortable saying that or if we need to. So I wonder if we should stop that sentence as as serve as a buffer. Between the low density and the high density senior. Or just stop it at the request of the select board. I welcome others thoughts.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any difficulty with that. I mean, actually, what the truth of the matter is, is that the majority sentiment on the testimony we got was let's have the duplexes and not have the senior residences, which is a particularly good buffering function, but I mean, nobody, nobody thought that the senior residents, nobody that I can remember thought that the senior residences were fine because they were adequately buffered by the duplexes.
We'll put a period here and then strike the remainder. Without your recommending, Mr. Urk.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this one? Nope. Let's go ahead and accept this. Okay, number eighty. Excuse me. For an addition. I don't remember exactly where, how the additions on this came about. So I think the red was the purple, I think, was there initially and the red was added in.
That's correct.
Okay, and so. So the neighborhood's concern includes not only the size of concerns, certainly concerns at this point include not only the size of the proposed structures, but the activities that will be associated with those structures. In finding seventy-one, Tyler de Reuters, BETA's traffic engineer, calculated that the daily traffic generated by the current neighborhood was twenty-two seventy-six trips and the additional traffic expected from the project would be for twelve trips or approximately eighty percent more. And then I was going to recommend adding the homeowner at the corner of Dorothy and Little John noted his front door camera reported around fifty vehicle trips past his house on an average day. That the additional anticipated trips would increase that number eightfold. The board has received testimony, the neighborhood today is very quiet and that children can safely play in the streets. Pickleball court was created on Little John Street adjacent to Dorothy Road. Some residents fear that the greatly increased activity associated with the final proposed project will adversely affect safety and the established quality of life in the neighborhood. We have any questions or concerns about that? Right. Lock that one in. Eighty-one. So we originally had had some information regarding parking. So this is just being brought up to here. The applicant originally proposed three fifteen parking spaces for the project ratio of one forty-four per unit. App can subsequently reduce the parking ratio. One hundred and ninety-three spaces are approximately one point one-two per unit. The applicants' final project design provides ninety-five parking spaces. Eighty-four garage parking spaces and eleven surface parking spaces. And I changed this comma to semicolon. Actually should be a colon, not a semicolon. Seeing this really. Parking garage will include ten E V charging stations with an additional ten E V ready parking spaces as shown on the project plans. The parking garage will provide for eight handicap parking spaces as well as two surface parking spaces designed for handicap parking as shown on the approved plans. Projects duplex units will have tandem parking to accommodate two vehicles per unit. With the exception of the eastern end unit, which will have a single parking space.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So is E V a term of art that everyone will understand or does that need, is that defined anywhere else? Does it say electric vehicle anywhere else or if that's what it stands for?
That's the, if what it stands for, I don't know that we specifically. No, but we can certainly do that. And then I just wanted to change this one sentence around. So the applicant's final project design provides ninety-five parking spaces for the senior living building. Eighty-four garage parking spaces and eleven surface parking spaces. Okay, I think that reads a lot better.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mills.
Uh, what's with the hyphen between E V and ready? Is that?
Um. I think it's just saying that there are spaces that they're, they would be, they would not have the E V charging devices installed, but they would be created in a way that they could readily have the, that equipment installed.
I was simply asking why the yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments on paragraph eighty-one?
Looks good.
All right. Go ahead and accept that. Before we go any farther, I'm just going to quickly save this. Eighty-two, the applicant did not originally propose bicycle parking. The applicant's final proposed project design includes twenty-eight covered, secured bicycle parking spaces accessible from the front of the senior living building. There's a possible expansion area for eight additional bicycle parking spaces within the senior residential parking garage. Outside the main entrance of the senior living building, the applicant will provide an additional two bike racks capable of securing six bikes apiece. Question about that one. Brings us up to construction impacts. So I had originally brought this for, this was a finding we had elsewhere. Mister Handland pointed out to me that we actually have this currently as a footnote elsewhere. And so we don't actually need to include it as a footnote. And he also nicely pointed out that eighty, the next one, which was originally eighty-four, was kind of long and we could split it into two. And that would preserve the numbering so that the numbering wouldn't get messed up going beyond that. So that's what I've gone ahead and done here. So this part of eighty-three is the, was the first half of eighty-four and now eighty-four is the second half of the original eighty-four. What did it just do? Okay, so eighty-five. So we had, we're looking to make some con, add some information regarding staging. And so I'm not sure this is fully yet in the form of a finding.
Sorry, I wrote it as a condition, not a finding. So.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
And all should be all. Yeah. Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So it would be pretty easy to begin by saying construction staging specifically for the modular units, but for other units as well has a high has poses a high risk of disturbance in the residential neighborhood. You, this chairman, if I could, I have a, okay, that's good. So the Mister Chairman, we might continue on here and say that the applicant has repeatedly informed the board that staging would take place off-site at several miles distance from the project. Period. The applicant has also advised the board that offloading would take place on the subject property. And Mister Chairman, I would say the board finds that these measures are important in reducing the construction impact on the neighborhood period. I would stop there, but you know, when we get to putting a condition in, we could go back to the language that didn't make it in. That's really the, the condition language and we could deal with it there.
So construction staging specifically for the modular units, but applicable to all. Put an comment in here. But applicable to all other aspects of construction pose a high risk of disturbance in the residential neighborhood. The twenty-five foot width of the local streets makes navigation of the neighborhood challenging, especially in the presence of parked cars. The applicant has repeatedly informed the board that staging would take place off-site at several miles distance from the project. The applicant has also advised the board that offloading would take place on the subject property. Board finds that these measures are important in reducing the construction impact on the neighborhood. Does that sound to everyone?
Mister Chair.
Mister Revellak.
A small suggestion. In the second line, perhaps in place of disturbance in the residential neighborhood, disturbance to the residential neighborhood.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman.
Mister Handlin.
Since we're doing this one a little on the fly, I'd like to make sure that we have not had the occasion to dive into the tapes. But I would like to have my colleagues reflect that their recollection of what we were told is the same as mine.
Now, that's definitely what I recall as well. Cause I remember there was a I remember specifically a question about whether trucks will be parked on the street while they were offloading. We were told no, that they would be offloaded from the site, particularly because the construction would be taking place farther back on the site and they wouldn't be able to access it from the street.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Are we all set with that one? Nothing else. I'll go ahead. Accept that one. Okay. Eighty-six, construction of the project is expected to take twelve to eighteen months. So I know we had had a different figure here before. There was some discussion back and forth between what construction is just the assembly of the, the modular units and what is the actual project site entirety? And so twelve to eighteen months was a number that was provided to the board in the course of its deliberation. So that's where that number is coming from. Seven, eighty, eighty-nine. So this is in regards to noise abatement and hours of operation. So the town's noise abatement bylaw allows construction activities between eight AM and six PM on weekdays, nine AM and five PM on Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. Local residents expressed considerable concern regarding what could be relentless construction without any quiet days. Was considerable interest in eliminating weekend work, even at the expense of a longer work schedule. The applicant was interested in starting weekday work earlier than allowed by the bylaw. This would provide the opportunity to have the workers arrive on site early before traffic would make commuting difficult. They agreed to know Sunday or holiday hours if they could start weekdays earlier. The board found this compromise acceptable and has incorporated these hours into the conditions. The board will also need to provide a waiver, which that is parenthetical because we have done that. So I just wanted to see if this met everyone's approval. I think there was a little question as to whether there, what we do have a formal, whether there was a, any kind of a formal agreement made during the hearings or whether it was just something that was discussed.
Mister Chairman.
Handlin.
My recollection is that it was there was no handshake because we don't do handshakes anymore. But and it was certainly discussed with a view towards working out and an acceptable arrangement. I don't necessarily believe that everybody who was watching us that night is bought into the, to the exception. But at least I thought that the clear gist of it was that the sort of trade-off here was something that was with both sides in a better position than just following the bylaw would.
If I change that to, they could be amenable to know Sundays or holiday hours if they could start weekdays earlier, that sound more appropriate, more accurate.
I don't know. I, I felt that the applicant was pretty clear, but but that would be fine.
Maybe we'll go back to the, say they were amenable to.
I believe that that is the case. There was, there was a considerable amount of discussion about Saturdays where I don't think that an agreement was actually reached, but Sunday and holidays did not seem to, as I recall, it did. as I recall, it didn't attract much opposition from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, that is my recollection as well.
Thank you both.
Mr. Chair, I concur to.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Anything further on eighty-nine? Lock that in. Number ninety. I'll go ahead and read this one, because it's kind of long. In the course of the public comment period, many a butter, come up here, I think just singular. Many butters and local residents expressed their significant concern in regards to the effects of the construction activity would have on their neighborhood. His concerns included blockage of streets by construction vehicles, traffic made worse by construction vehicles, contractor parking, storage of construction materials and the unloading of construction materials. Additional concerns included what specific routes the contractors and construction delivery vehicles would take to the site and at what time those deliveries would occur so as to minimize impacts on local traffic. There were also concerns raised in regards to noise, dust and vibration emanating from the site during construction, construction causing damage to their homes, damage to street trees, damage to local roadways, damage to the wetlands and damage to local wildlife. Other construction-related issues that were raised involved pest control, light emanating from the site during construction, what dates construction would begin and end, along with what would be the days of the week and times work on the site would be allowed. Several parties were anxious about the safety of the neighborhood children during construction, especially on the weekends. The butters and local residents made it known, they need to be informed and receive satisfactory responses to these questions and concerns. Furthermore, they expressed the need to know whom to contact if they require further information involving the construction or whom to contact if they observe issues and wish to notify someone or make a complaint. Any questions or comments on that one? That's pretty, pretty forceful and very accurate. I think I'll go ahead. Except that one. Means the open space and management of the conservation parcel. Is effectively as it was last time. So ninety-eight, we had a placeholder before about adding a paragraph about wildlife. So the proposed paragraph is the property provides significant wildlife habitat. On a number of occasions, members of the public have articulated their view of the critical importance of not only maintaining habitat, but of enhancing and creating additional habitat, particularly in the open space parcel. They described the diversity of wildlife that they have observed and provided photographs, including water, of waterfowl and deer. In its August fifth, twenty-twenty letter to the Department of Planning and Community Development, Beta stated that wildlife habitat is of significant interest to the town. They indicated the property would be expected to support numerous urban species such as common resident birds, raccoons, fox, squirrels, chipmunks, skunk, opossum, deer and rabbits. They recommended that the applicant conduct a wildlife habitat evaluation. The applicant's consultant, BSC Group, performed an evaluation on October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty. BSC observed several species, including rabbit, squirrel, presumed coyote and a variety of passerine birds. And its report entitled Wildlife Habitat and Vegetation Evaluation dated November twenty-twenty confirmed Beta's assessment that the property would be expected to serve as habitat for other human-adapted or human-tolerant species. BSC also noted that the habitat, especially the open space parcel, had been degraded by dumping of waste, including concrete and macadam and the accumulation of trash and debris, as well as from the encampment of homeless people. The inference may be drawn that the cleanup of the area and the cessation of human habitation will significantly improve the wildlife habitat.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Where you stumbled a little bit in reading is in the beginning where it says, in its report entitled Wildlife Habitat Confirmed. I think that, that somehow what started off being a long prepositional phrase, it turned into the subject of the sentence. And, but there isn't really a subject. So I would say that we could probably fix that easily by just saying that Beta's report entitled, and then go from there. Just get rid of the preposition. No, no, I'm talking about down further in the four lines, yeah, right after, right before the November. I tracked, yes, there.
All right. So you want to.
I would just simply say Beta's report, Beta's report entitled, and then off you go. That's all you need.
It's not Beta's report, it's BSC's report.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And I think for convention, instead of having quotes, I think we're using italics on the titles. Reports.
That. Italics. So should I leave it as it's, or should I change this to BSCs?
Well, the reason I suggested BSCs is that it's a fairly long way from the subject of the preceding sentence, so that it kind of is helpful to know what it refers to, but it doesn't matter if you could use either one. But I would take out the in, that's the most important thing.
BSC's report, tell wildlife habitat and vegetation evaluation dated November twenty-twenty, confirmed Beta's assessment, the property would be, okay. Further comments or questions on that paragraph? Thank you, everybody. Accept that. Visit to ninety-nine. So in alignment with prior attestations, the applicant has proposed that the portion of the property outside the development area shown on the plans is containing approximately twelve acres. The conservation parcel be placed under a conservation restriction and may be deeded to a third party to hold the conservation parcel as open space. The town has expressed significant concern regarding the existing condition of the proposed conservation parcel, which will require extensive environmental testing and cleanup relating to years of illegal dumping and habitation. Through the terms of a proposed memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the town of Arlington, the applicant intends to establish a proposed funding schedule to advance certain conservation and/or restoration efforts for the conservation parcel. That then goes on. So what has been discussed as being in the MOU so that if I knows that the applicant and the town are negotiating a memorandum of understanding in regards to the final disposition of the remaining portion of the site that's not being considered for development. And that memorandum of understanding, they're still under negotiation, it has not been signed, it has not been released as of yet. So the board is putting in findings based and conditions based on our understanding of what the memorandum of understanding should include. But the conditions are actually going to be conditional on the, on the, that if the town does sign a memorandum of understanding with the applicant, that that will supersede the terms of the comprehensive permit in those regards. So there's the perpetual restriction against first few, future development of the conservation parcel. That, so the applicant has already contracted third-party services to engage in the removal of solid waste, needles, sharps previously disposed on the property. And they have put forward a hundred thousand dollars towards it. Effort, working with some of the homeless coalition, the Arlington Police Department, they responded to community issue, finding housing for unhoused persons on the property. The applicant recognized that additional funds would be required to perform environmental testing, remove additional solid waste debris and prepare and implement a prioritized mitigation plan. And so for that, they're, they had proposed additional hundred thousand dollars, and then the applicant is offered to fund over the course of a ten-year period. Annual contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars for continued implementation, maintenance of the conservation parcel. Provide assurance to the ZBA, the applicant has offered to accept the condition to include a twenty-five thousand dollar annual maintenance budget for ten years upon the issuance of a final certificate occupancy. So these, and then the findings do not limit the applicant's obligation to clean, restore, remediate the site, nor does it remove any other requirements on the applicant under state or federal law. So basically what this is, this is what has come up on the course of our hearings as to what the applicant has offered in regards to what's referred to as the conservation parcel. Are there any questions or comments about that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
The thing that, that a lot of people are concerned about that isn't really addressed here is who's going to own the parcel at the end. And I guess some of how important that is depends a lot on what the conservation, how the conservation restriction would work. Certainly, if the conservation restriction were essentially granted to the town, the town would enforce it. And that would give, that would put the town in a good position to make sure that, that things develop in the way that they ought to. And to some extent, the same thing is true of granting it to a third party, so long as the third party is an appropriately selected entity. What I'm concerned about is what exactly a conservation restriction means if the applicant is basically giving it to itself. Who's going to enforce that? What actually is it going to mean? And procedurally, how does it even happen? And I was wondering if maybe Mr. Haverdy could could enlighten this on that, because this is one of those things that if, it may be a contentious thing in the negotiations between the town and the applicant. And we did explore it to some extent in the hearings. And the level of trust is better now than it was five years ago, but it's still not great. And a lot of people in the town, I think, are worried that a memorandum of understanding that resolves this issue won't be forthcoming and that the town won't have the protections that it is envisioning in the management of the conservation parcel.
What exactly clarification are you looking for?
So what happens when, let's suppose that there is no third party and that the town does not receive the, is not granted the rights. I'm assuming that this conservation restriction is a granted thing, so that somebody other than the applicant normally has the ability to enforce it. What happens when neither of that occurs and the applicant proposes to continue to own the property, but subject to a conservation restriction, which it voluntarily enters into?
Well, if it enters into a conservation restriction, then there is going to be a third party that actually holds that conservation restriction. So they won't have full control over the remaining parcel, irrespective of whether or not they, you know, they've retained deeded title to it. It'll still be the party that holds the restriction that actually gets to say what does it does not go on, on that parcel. I'm not sure, you know, where the concern would be.
Is it true that the, I had understood, at least from the closing hearing when this thing came up, that the applicant was proposing to, we, I guess it was to retain ownership in the parcel. It wasn't clear to me that they were planning to grant the conservation easement to anyone else. And one of the reasons they thought it was very useful to them to retain control over what's done on the property is that they had some thought of rendering it a sort of a park-like atmosphere that would be an amenity to the, to the apartment building. And really testing how that would work, if that's what they want to do, if that's where their interest is, how do these legal arrangements deal with that?
Well, again, if it's subject to a conservation restriction, that's a legal process that's done through the state. It has to be signed off by the state and there has to be a third-party nonprofit entity that actually.
I see, okay.
So and I don't see any reason for concern, you know, as long as it's going to be a actual conservation restriction as set forth under the statute.
I thank you, Mr. Haverdy. I was led astray a little bit by the tone of the discussion in the hearing, which would seem to eliminate the interfacing of the third party. But I'm happy that that situation is as you described.
Yeah, it can't, it's not eligible to be a deed-restricted conservation restriction that's enforceable in perpetuity unless there is that third-party nonprofit entity, which can be the Conservation Commission, or it can be, you know, a separate nonprofit conservation group. But it does have to be something that's accepted by the state. It can't just be the applicant as the party that's holding the restriction on its own property.
Right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, so in, sort of in line with Mr. Hanlon, with this, for the start of your kind, your comments, initially, the applicant had indicated they were interested in donating the land to the town. And that has certainly shifted over the course of the last five years to being much more that that land might transfer to a third party or that the applicant may hold the property with it as Mr. Haverdy's a conservation easement, that's a conservation restriction that's held by another party. Do we want to include an additional paragraph that sort of documents that the evolution of the, the ownership on the conservation parcel?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think that we sort of do, for many, many of us on the board and off, that evolution is not a mutual thing and it's part of the factual background of this case.
You think it should be a part of ninety-nine, or should we make it a different number? Because the subs are all things that the applicant is. I mean, we could do it as another one, because I mean, it does sort of relate to what the applicant has stated, but it doesn't relate specifically to the
Right.
What's in the MOU.
It may be, I don't feel strongly about this, but it might be useful to bring it to, to bring it at the very end. I hate to introduce a new paragraph without getting rid of one.
Just accept this as it is. Get it. So, okay, so we can start a paragraph here, and it will still be under ninety-nine, but it would be a separate sort of follow-up paragraph. Sort of follow-up paragraph. I'm just typing away here, so feel free to. Jump in if you have recommendations.
Doing good.
I'm just thankful in the back of my mind to my high school typing teacher whose name I wish I could recall so I could thank her at this moment in time. How's that?
Chairman, that looks pretty good to me. Think that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's important and I think you succeeded in doing this in saying that it's. Having somebody to hold the conservation agreement is of the utmost performance. Avoids the potential danger of signaling to the applicant that well, that would be all right then. I think that it's always true that having somebody that dealing with the counterparty. In whom you have a great deal of faith and a history of. Of cooperation and. Good dealing is is always better than having. A provision in an agreement and so at least from my point of view. I very much hope. That the town and the applicant are pursuing this with an open mind towards. Having either the town or a third party, but not the applicant retain ownership of. The conservation parcel, notwithstanding the. The conservation restriction.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Anything further from the board on this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So it's not necessarily specific to that paragraph, which I like a lot. But it's really just a clarification and perhaps from Mr. Haverdy. So in terms of the terms of a conservation restriction, are those essentially? Something that we are going to develop or have set out in the conditions or is it something that's more pro forma? I just want to know how much input we have. Or if we need to have in in terms of what those particulars might be.
So there is sort of a standard format, you know, that the state uses for conservation restrictions, but there can be, you know, a decent amount of variation. Within those. I mean, I don't know that you want to get into that sort of finite detail. As to what exactly you want to see. I think that you want. The opportunity to review the conservation restriction before it's executed.
Okay.
I think that that should be sufficient.
So that brings us to number one hundred, the general section. And these are. Barely boilerplate, I believe. We needed to review. I guess so Paul. Everybody at the last meeting, we had. Edited this paragraph, the first paragraph, paragraph one hundred. At the sense that no time during the public hearing to the applicant contend that the cost of the project rendered it uneconomic as such, the board finds that such conditions. Will not render the project uneconomic. To the extent that such conditions may render the project uneconomic and then the rest of that. Is specifically. From the prior case, does do you see any issue with that statement?
I mean, the only problem with that statement is the applicant never got to see the final. Terms of the decision during public hearings, so never really had the chance to say. Whether or not it believed the project, you know, the decision rendered the project uneconomic. Basic outlines were there. The the conditions. That were discussed, you know, pretty much in great detail while the hearing was still open, you know, are the main. Conditions impacting the economic viability. Of the decision. So I do think in spirit that this probably is accurate.
Thank you. That's the end of the findings. There anything that we missed in the findings that we want to make sure we go back and add? The nothing, I'll go ahead and save this. Into the conditions which we've spent considerable time on already. This is the the plans that are forming a part of what's referred to as the approved plans, as Mr. Hanlon had pointed out. Section B is the section on affordability. And again, as we had done on the prior case, the town does not, we're not. Requesting any local preference in who may apply for the units. Submission requirements. There was a request. The landscape plan for the area is not under the jurisdiction. Of the wetlands by law. So originally it said all planting shall consist of native, non-invasive drought tolerant species. And so there was a request by Mr. Mills to add non-cultivar. To that. So just to be clear, so this is for the plantings that are around the. The buildings themselves and not for the. Areas that are farther that are a part of the conservation land. Or and are not in the wetlands areas. So I just wanted to make sure that that was something we had wanted to impose. For those areas. People okay with that? Then section subsection E, so this is the, this is the landscape plan for the areas that are. In the wetlands areas and under the that are typically under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. There was. This is the rational versus rationale questions. We're working that out with Mr. Hanlon this afternoon. So number one, the quantity of plants before and after re vegetation and the rationale behind the removal. In maintenance plan. Under the planting plan. The total area in SF, just saying the total area. In square feet, just to clarify what we're. What is being requested. And again, rational versus rationale. Patient plans. The survival rate of the plantings is less than eighty percent. The dead, failing or diseased plantings will be replaced. No idea what that's asking for. Conditions, the C2s are prior to the issuance of any building permits. Mr. Hannah pointed out the applicant will be responsible for all applicable sewer permit capacity impacts and privilege fees as applicable. Notwithstanding the foregoing. The applicant shall not be responsible for any infiltration and inflow INI fees. So they do precede, not go after, so that should be. Or going rather than following. And then again, I think this is probably the same as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So in H, I just see that we have the word applicable twice and I'm okay with it if there's a reason for it to be there, but. Where it says shall be responsible for applicable, do we just want to say all sewer permit? As applicable, leave it leave as applicable. Either way. I just didn't think we needed applicable twice.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps consider sewer permit to sewer permits. Just because everything else in that. You know, in that conjunction is plural.
Okay, so the applicant will be responsible for all applicable sewer permits, capacity impacts. And privilege fees. Oxford. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the applicant shall not be responsible for any INI fees. App will be responsible for all applicable water and sewer system fees as per officially promulgated fee schedules and uniformly applicable to all other town of projects. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the applicant shall not be responsible for any INIs. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In H. I think. The intention here, when you get to capacity. Is that you're, everything else in that list is a fee of some sort. And I think maybe the idea was that should be capacity impact fees.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yep. Sewer permits, capacity impacts and privilege fees. So then. So that actually this.
I'm assuming there is such a thing as a cap capacity impact fee, although I'm not aware that I pay it.
App could be responsible for all applicable sewer permits. And capacity impact.
Let me try again. H is all about fees that the applicant has to pay. And I think the intent.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Was that there's a permit fee, they have to pay that, a capacity fee, they have to pay that. And privilege, well, I'm not quite sure what the privilege fee is. So I'm not quite sure how that works out, but I think the theme that goes all the way through it. Is fees, which ones do they have to pay and which ones don't they?
So why I see what this looks like. So the app can be responsible for all applicable sewer permit. Comma. Capacity impact comma and privilege fees. Does that sound right?
I think so. It sounds right. The question is whether it makes sense in the real world because I'm not really up on. The various fees that people pay, maybe one of the rest of us. Aaron or Kevin might be able to help.
I think I agree with you. I think it does read, it definitely reads better in this format and is probably more accurate.
And just as I do note that it does, we do have the word all or the phrase all applicable. So if one of these is not in fact a fee, it's probably, it may be okay simply because it doesn't apply.
Makes sense. All right. Moving on. So the first in the absence of a signed memorandum of understanding. The second. Construction. Product commencement, any work on the property. infections, temporary signage. Twenty-two. So this was about the. That the applicant shall comply with, includes the noise abatement by law. So we just want, thought we should add, except that specifically waived in this decision. Because we do waive a portion of it in order to allow. Changing the work hours. D thirty-three, so D thirty-three. Again, was the, is the, the second half of the construction staging.
Mr. Chair. This is just a curious question. You know, the the phrase not closer than two miles. I'm just curious why two as opposed to say one or three.
It was arbitrary. It was far enough away from the site to keep it off of the. The major roads, but the one wording we could add is two miles or approved by AHJ, you know, the authority having jurisdiction. Or other approved or other approved by the AHJ. And the fifteen minutes is also arbitrary. I think it's, I mean, I think these, these numbers are trying to just highlight. That. Highlighted distance that they can't just park around the block on somebody else's, clogging somebody else's small street. They can't, you know, sit there for thirty minutes or an hour, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, sir.
As I recall, the applicant, when they were describing. Where the module, the staging area would be was actually further away than two miles. But I'm. Not sure that I see. The interest that we have once it's out of the neighborhood. In other words, this is about protecting the neighborhood from what otherwise would be staging there. If it was two miles, three miles, five miles. Or a mile and a half, it's, it's. Probably not our problem, or if it is, it's certainly a different problem because that mile and a half is on some of the street and some of the part of Arlington. And so I'm wondering whether. We need to be as specific, the important thing is that it. That the unloading will take place, you know, on the property itself. And when we get to. Idling, we're introducing not just the question of pollution in the neighborhood, which is not insignificant. But you're also introducing. A general pollution question that also has implications for greenhouse gases. And I'm not quite sure I understand. Why? Idling is necessary at all. I mean, you know, lots of people turn their cars off when they're waiting to do something and it seems to me that that would be. A better practice than sitting there and letting it idle. I realized that there is some. Stories and presumably evidence that that, you know, you you emit a larger amount of. Gases of various kinds when you're starting your car. And that may affect, you know, some length of time thing, but I'd sort of like to see them not idling their vehicles in the neighborhood at all.
I think I'll probably just take out the idling. Construction vehicles. I I think I got my own wording confused about being idle and then idling, so. I don't, I don't know that I was trying to necessarily. Speak to the, to a car, a vehicle being on or off. I mean, I agree. I don't think they should idle at all, but I mean, the reality is that's just what they do, have a have a vehicle idling. The only comment, Mr. Hanlon, about the distances, I I guess my concern was if you didn't give a value. Then it would just leave it open to trusting that they would do it far enough away. And if that's the case, what's the point of writing any of this? So I felt like, you know. What what you often, what one often sees or I see on large projects is that. You get concrete trucks lined up around the block, whether it's two blocks away or four blocks away and. Or you get, you know, you get modular trucks lined up, you know. Wherever they can park and wait, and so they can just kind of. Fall into the queue. So that that was the only intent of having a number totally arbitrary, but I think it was really to get it out of the neighborhood.
But yeah, long away. I see what the point is, is that. It's not on the street if it's around the block. That would be fine. I wouldn't be unduly restrictive about it, though. I mean, two miles away is foul enough. I mean. You know, there's going to be a lot of fighting things and it seems to me that if we're going to impose a restriction. There needs to be a substantial local concern behind the restriction, which you've just articulated, and that sounds fine to me. But I wouldn't go. Further than that and being over prescriptive.
What I have here. Is a construction staging specifically for the modular units, but applicable to all other aspects of construction such as. Concrete trucks shall occur offsite in a location acceptable to the Director of Inspektional Services. All deliveries to the site shall be offloaded on the property. Delivery vehicles shall not be permitted to idle. Delivery and construction vehicles shall not block any driveways or public ways. The intent of this condition is to prevent traffic congestion. And idling of construction vehicles.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So where you said driveways or public ways, I don't know if all of the streets. In that vicinity are public ways, or if there might be a private way tucked in there. And I don't know if we would be overstepping our bounds, but I'd like to see private or public ways.
We can certainly have private ways. Intent of this condition is to prevent traffic congestion and reduce the impact of construction vehicles on the local neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, do we have somewhere a provision that relates to parking construction vehicles on the street? I seem to remember that we have something like that somewhere.
I believe we do. Parking of all vehicles and equipment must be on the property during construction. There is under D sixteen. Any further adjustments to this paragraph?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I I just want to, I just had this thought that popped in and it's just that. You know, as Mr. Ford had, you know, talked about queuing and I'm wondering. Is the language, do you think that we have acceptable to director, Director of Inspektional Services? So is that sufficient? And I'm hoping it is. So that if somebody a mile away says, you know, there are a number of concrete trucks parked on our street. And, you know, they've been there every day for the last three, four days. And they are attached to this project and so. Do we think that that with the language of this paragraph? Would give Inspektional Services the authority to say you can't do that. I guess that's my main concern.
Mr. Haverty, what's your sense on that?
My sense is that if it constitutes a zoning issue in another district, then the Director of Inspektional Services has. Whatever authority it has to enforce the zoning on that property. Waiver of any zoning provisions for anything that's off of the. The forty B site. So whatever they do has to comply with existing zoning terms of that staging.
And I'm assuming if the. Vehicles were being staged on the public way. That was caught in a manner that was causing a problem, then obviously the be under the jurisdiction of the police department to. To address such issues.
Yep.
Okay, so I believe that's the last of the Ds. Yeah, construction completion, certificate of occupancy. Again, this is more of the in the absence of a signed memorandum of understandings. So this is the one where. Put in a conservation restriction shall be in effect in perpetuity and shall limit the use of said parcel for conservation of the wetland resources and passive recreation by the general public. Well, we were talking about the conservation restriction earlier. There was something we wanted to make sure we included. In this place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So. We actually are, we we've got a great paragraph that I think was written by Mr. DuPont earlier about wildlife. And, you know, the the conservation of wetland resources is sort of part of that, but it's not the whole of it. And so we might want to think a little more deeply in what it is that. What limitations should be, you know, on the other hand, these things gathered from what Mr. Haverty says are generally fairly. Cut and dried and everybody knows. What they mean if you follow the forms and if you get too original, you may not know what they mean. So I'm a little bit nervous about doing too much, but the truth is, is that we're eager to. Protect more than just what's here and I don't know whether getting into more detail would be advantageous. Whether this language would exclude anything we wanted to include. Or whether trying to wrestle with the question is just going to. Make it more more difficult. Because, you know, we don't have any direct authority as far as I know, what's in this conservation, we saw a conservation restriction anyway.
So earlier we had, earlier we had. Thought about whether the. Conservation, the final conservation restriction, whether it should be. Whether the board should review it. Did we want to include that?
Mr. Haverty seems to be wisely nodding his head.
Yeah, I think you should include that as a provision.
Do you submit it to the board for approval? Or just for review?
For administrative review.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think I might suggest changing in the first line, the status of the memorandum of understanding to. The status of a memorandum.
Okay.
He sounds a little bit more definitive as if it already exists to me. Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up a wise comment with an almost silly one, but. Michael wanted to say CR because we made a big effort in the preceding paragraph to introduce. To introduce that abbreviation and set it there and.
What was that, Mr. Haverty?
Yeah, I think Mr. Analyst is saying is use the term CR rather than conservation restriction.
Per Mr. Hanlon's earlier comment, do we want to include anything about what we would want? The conservation restriction to. Include, or should we just leave that to the negotiation? I know in our prior discussions with the Conservation Commission. You know, we had. Talked about preserve, you know, the. The about the, you know, the passive recreation, they were very important, they were very concerned that. You know, conservation of the wetland resources was the first and foremost, the most important aspect of the conservation restriction and that absolutely needs to be first. And that passive recreation would be sort of a secondary thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I guess. I think this is kind of complicated. The underlying idea is that. Is that this land should remain in a more or less wild state. So turning it into something that looks like Central Park. Would probably not be what it is that you're looking to do with the CR, even though that's really great for passive recreation and may. Preserve some wetland resources and 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 other things. And as I recall, there was some discussion in the last or the second to the last day of our hearings. Of just exactly what it is that would be envisioned here and the kind of. Passive recreation that I think it was the Conservation Commission, but somebody had in mind was something like a boardwalk. Which is already there near the, there is one similar to that of taking you through the wetlands and near the transit station. But, you know, turning it into something that's unduly prettied up is sort of not what we want to do. And it's hard to, it's kind of. It's hard to get it said exactly right. Mr. Haverty, I wonder. How is it that, I mean, this is something that everybody will have to strike that struggle with because it's very hard to say exactly what you mean. In this kind of situation, how do others do it?
Again, generally, it's it's left to be resolved after the permit has been issued, but through a review. By the Board of the actual. Conservation restriction to be executed. So that's my recommendation is the board reserve the rights to review. The. Conservation restriction that's proposed to be executed. But ultimately, you know, it's it's going to be executed between. The applicant, the state and whatever the entity is that's going to sort of oversee.
So, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if the best way to 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 do this is to say less. And simply say that the CR shall be in effect in perpetuity and shall limit the use of said parcel. To conservation purposes and to a lesser extent limited passive regular. Recreation by the general public. And you just don't, that that prepositional phrase of the wetland resources is where we're getting into trouble. Because that's both a little bit too broad and a little and not quite broad enough. And it seems to me that if you just get rid of it. You've got something that that says enough about what the standard is that we know what we're doing when it comes back to us. And. And. But doesn't narrow, it doesn't undesirably narrow things down.
So you would get rid of of the wetland resources?
Yeah. And I would just say to conservation purposes.
Limit the use of the parcel to conservation purposes and to a lesser extent limited passive recreation by the general public.
That would be fine.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Revellak.
Yeah, I was going to say this, I mean, it sounds like I get the sense that. You know, we were going to at least have the opportunity to review this, but. We may not necessarily be the 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 body that negotiates the MOU and we might not necessarily be party to it. But I I think we have done of the finding section, I I think does a pretty thorough job in. You know, outlining the various ways in which the conservation parcel is important. And, you know, hopefully, some of that, you know, rubs off down the road, so to speak.
Thank you for that, Mr. Revellak. So. With that in mind, does this sentence provide the guidance that we're looking to provide? All right, everyone.
Yes.
And then and G as well. Based on Rance's ability to. That's where we're. Whoops, now we have two Gs, so I've changed that to H. And then E two. Parts that the issue was the final certificate of occupancy reputation. Eight, three is property management plan, and then E four. So we, this was, we had included the finding in regards to. Monitoring that the local traffic that was something that had been recommended by Tac. And so this is the condition that would correspond to that. So this is new as well. Shrink it so it actually all appears at once. So close. So within three years after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall participate in a post. So close. Uh, so within three years after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall participate in a post-development monitoring study designed to determine the local traffic on neighborhood streets and to make recommendations regarding traffic calming measures that may be necessary and desirable to mitigate impacts on the streets on and between Lake Street and the project location, which include Lake Street, Wilson Avenue, Little John Street, Homestead Road, Birch Street, Margaret Street, Mary Street, Mott Street, and Dorothy Road and Parker Street. Street. Uh, the study shall be submitted to the Town of Arlington Transportation Advisory Committee for review and approval by TAC and the Arlington Select Board in accordance with the procedure set forth in the Town of Arlington Transportation Advisory Committee Traffic Calming Guideline approved by TAC December 8, 2010, Traffic Calming Guidelines. The applicant shall cooperate with the town in implementing all such measure, measures.
To Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, so this obviously is that one of the most muscular conditions that we have to impose. Um, and it would have been nicer to be able to do more, but all of this is going to happen substantially after this project is built. It's kind of a looking backwards. And I think that it's appropriate to, uh, to me at least, the main purpose of it is, is not so much to try to force the applicant to do a study and to push through traffic calming measures. I think that, that we might not be on firm ground attempting to do that, but it is important to have someone say, look, there's a problem here. Tac said there was a problem here and Tac actually will be the agency that is going to review what, what the study would say. So somebody needs to do it. Most of the changes that have to take place will be changes that are within the power of the town to do. And ultimately we have to depend upon the count, the town to cooperate with the applicant in doing something that will meet the needs of, of, of the people in the neighborhood as best they can be met. Uh, and so I'm sort of satisfied with not reaching too far. Uh, because I have some hope that the process will emerge from this where it's not just the applicant, but also the town and everybody is paying attention to a problem, which I think we all think is, is significant.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mills.
Could we go back up a little bit? I thought I saw one section where you just had an A and not a B. I think for formatting, if you're going to have an A, you have to have a B. Yeah, E2 there. Do you need to have a B if you have an A?
I think it should be at one point and then it got deleted.
Well, actually I think, uh, E2B became B, E3 if I remember correctly.
So you can just have that run into his one sentence then. Or one paragraph. Just a simple, I mean, a silly formatting thing. I don't know whether we want to pay attention to it or not.
I'll tell you, if I can get word to accept it.
It's tough when you get that indentation.
All right, that works.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further on E4? Just into F. And do an F, nothing new. G. H. Big change in I was I went through and got rid of all the blanks and then went back and made sure that we had all the references correct. Chase. Back to the decision, vote. Um, it was noted that this is a town hall Grovelands, we've changed that to Arlington. Um, that's a set decision on waivers. Think the only one that we, there's one that has changed. We'll make sure there wasn't anything else sort of hanging out. So it's 32. So this is the one in regards to noise abatement and that's resetting the hours. So we had originally had a condition in here that just that the applicant, you know, requests a waiver to allow for hours of construction that differ, and then the waiver would be granted as conditioned. And the question that was brought up was that if for some reason, the, um, the applicant had wanted to get Sunday hours back and had appealed to the state for that, but still wanted to keep the early morning hours. And so basically what this does is it states that should one part of the condition be wait, be disallowed, then the whole condition is disallowed.
Very good.
So it maintains it as an all or nothing.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a typo after Sundays says AM, you need a D.
Where else is that? Sorry.
Right after the word Sundays.
Oh.
Under board action.
Sundays are legal holidays. Oh, there we go.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in one place we use the clause Sundays or legal holidays and one place we use Sundays and legal holidays. I, I, I think we want and, um, rather than, I think we, I, I, I suggest and in both places.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd be willing to vote for or. And the reason is that at least from the point of view of language, uh, the last thing, if the, if you say and Sundays and legal holidays, suppose what happened was the prohibition against work on Sundays was invalidated for some reason, but legal holidays was left in play. And really what we want to say is if either the Sundays or the legal holidays um, are eliminated, then the whole thing is eliminated. That, that's kind of where I would be. Now, maybe you might, maybe you all have a different idea of what the policy should be, but the reason for choosing war rather than and is exactly that. What happens if Sunday or, or holidays is preserved, but the other isn't?
I withdraw my suggestion.
What if we say and or? Go back on or?
That'd be, as long as there's an or in there somewhere, it makes it clear.
So the waiver to allow hours of operation beginning at 7:30 AM on weekdays is contingent on the limitation prohibiting work on Sundays or legal holidays contained in D16. If the prohibition against work on Sundays or legal holidays is subsequently stricken from this decision, this waiver shall cease to be operative. Right. Does sound good to all? All right. No more comments or track changes. Okay. We have gone through the entire draft decision. Reached its end, which means last request of all, if there are any final findings or conditions. Any member of the board would want to attach to this document. No from all. Note from all. So that brings us up to having to make a decision here. So what the board has in front of us, so we now have a drafted decision that, um, we have effectively gone through and called everything we wanted to change, everything we wanted to modify so that it is as, uh, complete as the, as the board has made it. And so the board still has in front of it, um, sort of the three options the board had in front of it when we started on this process. The board has the option of approving the original application without, uh, condition, which I, I, I think it's fair to say that the board is not considering. The board has the option of voting to approve the, this decision, which has conditions and waivers in it. Or the board can vote to, um, to deny the permit. Uh, those three options are, those options are still in front of the board. And it is, you know, not up to need a direct board, how it, you know, how it should want to proceed, how it's really, it needs to be up to the individual members. Um, really what the board is trying to determine is does this decision, does it meet local needs for this project? In terms of, you know, providing affordable housing, which is the, the purpose of the comprehensive, uh, permit process, but also in regards to other needs of the local community in terms of, you know, the, the traffic, the enjoyment of their neighborhood, the wetlands, the wildlife. And all other aspects that we have spent time, um, discussing on this project. So at this point, are there any topics that the members of the board would want to discuss in regards to, how we would proceed on a, on a vote or anything that, you know, pertains to the project that they would want us to discuss? Are people pretty much ready to cast a vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, we really can go two ways here. We could try, if anyone was interested in making a motion to deny, we could discuss that and decide whether or not we wanted to do that. Or we can, uh, I think have a motion that would move the adoption of the decision that we've been working on for the last month. Um, at that point, the discussion, if people were so inclined, uh, if that failed to get the requisite majority, then it would be denied. Uh, so, uh, if you have the lateness of the hour, I would sort of like to skip to part two rather than have a preliminary motion so that he, he, the motion carries to take, to approve the draft decision. Uh, or it doesn't, in which case we reject the draft decision, but either way, in a shorter period of time, with only one discussion, we'd be able to resolve the entire case.
I think that very much makes sense.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if people are comfortable going that way, I'm perfectly willing to start it by moving the acceptance of the decision, uh, as we have perfected it in a technical legal sense, uh, over the course of the last month.
Mr. Hanlon, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion in regards to the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, I think with all the people watching, it would be so anticlimactic if we didn't have any discussion. Uh, but I think everybody would value a short one. Um, this is by far, I mean, obviously it's not perfect. But before I was on the board, I was still seeing all the signs about preserve the Mugar wetlands. And the applicant has worked with the Conservation Commission to go as, out as far as the Conference of Mission Commission could get them to go to protect the Westlands and then a little bit further. Now, is that going to be enough, given all of the things we know are likely to happen to us over, you know, the lifetime of my grandchildren? No. Uh, and I wish we could do, I wish we could have done more. I wish we could have focused in on what more there is to do and actually followed a little more the advice of the Western memorandum in the Arlington Land Trust. Um, but we haven't been given the right to be the czar of this project. All we can do is operate within the matrix of legal rules. And so the first thing I observe is that, uh, we've gone a long way towards protecting the Mugar wetlands. Uh, and all of that, as Mr. Moore pointed out, uh, at near the last hearing, all of that is an issue. It's not like we get to bank it all. Who knows what would happen if this goes to the state and if the HAC gets its hand to, to it. They aren't looking at the same thing we do. They don't know about the, the wetlands. They, you know, it's all abstract to them and for them, with all due respect to everybody here, you know, we understand that what's at stake is the quality of life in this neighborhood, but for them it'll be, oh, that's the Arlington NIMBY case. And I don't like it, but you know, that's what they're going to do. And so I think that we've got a lot of good things in what has happened so far. Um, it, I would have liked to have more, but I, we think we've got a lot. And I think we're much better off preserving the advantages that we've gotten. Uh, and, uh, and adopting something which I trust at least the applicant uh, won't appeal. And if, and if the applicant does appeal, then fine, that, that would be the same as our turning it down. So I would like to do that. I do think that, I would like to say that the hearing has sensitized me to the pressure this love, this neighborhood is suffering under. Uh, a lot, both in terms of the flooding and which I think has got to, to some extent be due to inadequate stormwater management on the town's part, but I'm not ready to find that because I don't know enough about it. But the this, this, this neighborhood is under a lot of pressure. And it seems to me that we have done what we can to address that and we don't have the ability to do everything that we might do. And at the same time, affordable housing is in a, well, we need in this town and throughout the, and, and throughout the Boston region. So it's a hard decision, I think, and I certainly become acquainted with the people who've been talking to us. I'm going to miss them sometimes. Uh, and, and maybe not some others, but I, I think that, that all of these cases show us aspects of life in Arlington that we don't often see, that we're not really looking. And, uh, and I think that, that I'm hoping that not just with respect to this project, but generally with respect to what happens in the neighborhood, that this is at least the beginning for some things that measures that can be done by other people. Uh, that would relieve some of the pressure, uh, that, that people properly feel.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills.
I would just like to say that I think as a board, we've done as best possible, given the circumstances to make a a silk purse out of a sow's ear, so to say. I think it's a bitter pill this neighborhood's going to have to swallow. But I believe moving forward affirmatively on this is the best result the neighborhood can hope for, because we've got our conditions in place on many issues. And the the power the applicant has behind them with the state, if we voted in the negative, I think would be even worse on the neighbors. And they certainly have my personal sympathy. That being said, I think, you know, I think we need to vote in the affirmative, both for the affordable housing and B to control things as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. There others?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DuPont.
So I I would like to agree with both Mr. Hamlin and Mr. Mills. I think it was stated very clearly and eloquently. And I think the thing that I've personally wrestled with is the thought in the back of my mind that I just wish that there was something to do to stop this or to just sort of cut it down substantially. But I think, as Mr. Mills just indicated, we really don't have that authority because the state is the ultimate arbiter of this. And so I think it's a reluctant decision on my part, but I have to be in agreement with both Mr. Mills and Mr. Hamlin with regard to the analysis that they gave.
Mr. Revlock?
I just wanted to trying not to repeat earlier comments. This is, this has been a very long negotiating process. And, you know, considering where we started, I, there are a few elements of the project that we managed to negotiate that I I feel personally proud of. I understand, as Mr. Bill said, this will be a likely be a difficult pill for the neighborhood to swallow. But I'm hoping that you know, some good things will come of it. And I'm I'm also hoping that Mr. Ririg is right in that in 50 years, the thing that will, you know, be making the most difference and that will, people will remember the most is the conservation parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. For work or Mr. Ford, did either of you have comments you wanted to make?
Chairman, I guess I would just reiterate what others have said. I mean, this project was pre-approved by this, was approved by the state with you know, over 207 apartments in the 12 units. And I think it bears repeating again that if we rejected this outright, people have to know the applicant could appeal and go back to what they originally wanted. And then, secondly, if we make our conditions too onerous, the applicant can appeal and go back to what they originally wanted. So I do think it's a reluctant decision in a lot of ways, or it's a reluctant decision. But I think we have to try and come up with something that balances the need for local housing with the town interests. And I think a lot of people have done a lot of work to get us there. So and and I think I I'm inclined to vote in favor of it, even though it is a bitter pill to swallow for the neighbors, because I think would be a lot worse if we deny or if the conditions are a lot more onerous, such as what Mr. DuPont, if we tried to reduce this significantly, I think that would be a real problem. And then the neighbors would be back to 200 plus units with 12 houses in.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have anything to add other than to just say I agree with my peers. I'm I'm not happy about this project on the site. I don't think it's a good thing for the site, but I think our options are a little bit limited, so so I'll just be agreeing with my my peers here.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Yeah, so I mean, really, I feel, you know, very strongly in line with the with the other members of my board. I mean, the the comprehensive permit process was initiated by the state to generate additional affordable housing, which was a problem for the state at the time it was passed and continues to be a problem for the state. And you know, Arlington is a town with limited available land for projects such as this. I think this is probably the largest undeveloped parcel left in Arlington. And as initially envisioned back in the 50s, the plan was for this to to be a shopping plaza available from Route 2, and that did not come to fruition. That was attempted again in the 70s and didn't come to fruition. And the town has tried to purchase this property outright for conservation, and that has been unsuccessful as well. And so this is in some ways, it's the most recent in a string of attempts to develop this parcel, but is likely to be the final one. Because the this process doesn't allow for a town to easily bypass its responsibility to provide affordable housing to those members of its population that are in need of housing. And the sort of the carrot that the only carrot that this really comes with, I think, and all two carrots, this comes with in a lot of ways. One is that this does allow finally for sort of a final disposition of the wetland portion of the property for the conservation parcel to have it be properly cleaned, to have it be restored, to have the invasives managed on it, to have it be planted with native species and to have it be brought back and to serve as a much better functioning wetland resource, but also as a place for wildlife. And, you know, hopefully, a place where there can be some limited enjoyment by the public, so the public can come out and and see what this parcel really is and to do it in a in a safe manner and in a way that allows them to really enjoy the the neighborhood. And the other piece of this is that, you know, understanding that this is sort of an imposition on the neighborhood and that, you know, I think everyone would be more than happy to have the six duplex units on Dorothy Road and nothing else. That there will be new neighbors in this neighborhood. And that, you know, we're very hopeful that those neighbors will become an integral part of this community, this neighborhood and share the passion that the current residents do for this neighborhood. And that they will, you know, be as be as passionate and be as supportive and really take a strong effort to be a part of this this neighborhood, because as as we have been learning over the course of the, you know, the last 20 months or so, this is really a special place in in Arlington, which has a really strong support among its residents. And, you know, while there are certain people we have met through this process who we have heard from, you know, time and time again, there are lots of people we may have heard from once, and certainly many, many more who we have received emails from and correspondence from, but have not spoken up directly in the meetings. And one of my primary goals, being Chair of this board, has been to make sure that we listen to everybody. And that everyone is heard by this board and that everyone feels that they've been heard by this board. And we understand that, you know, it's not possible for us to to necessarily implement everything that everybody wants and to do things the way that everybody wants, because there are so many competing interests and competing needs in regards to this area and the the issues of affordable housing in this in this town. But when this started, we had two main problems. One was the problem of how to preserve the wetlands, and the second was how do we access the site? And I think we have become been through the through the efforts of the Conservation Commission, our conservation agent and Beta and the applicant and their team have, I think, come to a pretty good conservation plan for the wetlands portion and the wildlife portion. And the traffic side, I I think unfortunately is not going to be as as clear cut and is not as as good a an outcome. But unfortunately, with, you know, we've had very limited possibilities for how we could address those those terms, and especially given the the conditions of Lake Street and the inability to access Route 2 directly, which is something I know a lot of us had hoped we would be able to to do early on the process. So I think for me, I would, you know, I strongly thank everyone for all their efforts throughout this this whole process. And given given where we are with with this decision, I think we have come up with a strong and defensible decision as we can for this project. And I hope that we are able to pass it and that we're able to see it through to to its final fruition in a way that it is, it becomes an asset for this neighborhood and can do so going into the future. So with that, unless there's further discussion, the board has a motion before it, which is a motion to approve the comprehensive permit for Thorndike Place as conditioned by the decision that's before us. Now, just ask Mr. Haverty if there's anything else I need to add to that motion.
I think that motion is fine, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. So then, without further ado, I will take a vote of the board. Except I have to at this point. So the the board consists of five members. We have two very excellent associate members of the board who have been with us for every single meeting since the start. And unfortunately for them, they're not allowed to vote on the final decision because it's the vote of the board. But I did want to thank both Steve Revlock and Aaron Ford for for being here constantly to making sure that when the and now that we're at the end, we would have still five voting members present. So I thank you both for that. So for a vote of the board on the motion, Roger DuPont.
Hi.
Patrick Hamlin.
Hi.
Kevin Mills.
Hi.
Sean O'Rourke.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So the comprehensive permit for Thorndike Place is approved as conditioned by the draft decision. So thank, thank you to everyone who's taken a part in this process. I especially like to thank Paul Haverty, who has been with us since day one on this, and has been a tremendous tremendous asset to us, keeping us on the straight and narrow, really appreciated. All your assistance with not only this one, but with also with the 1165 RMASAB, which you had helped us with also earlier in the year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been my pleasure working with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
And thank, we thank you very much also to first and foremost, to everyone in the in the public who has taken a part in this process. Well, it is a much better decision based on your input and your assistance and guidance in allowing us to better understand your neighborhood and your neighborhood's needs. It's greatly appreciated. Like to thank our consultants, thank the Conservation Commission, our conservation agent, the Department of Planning and Development, especially Director Jennifer Rate and Kelly Linema, the Assistant Director, who have been invaluable to
Doctor Poe.
That's terrible.
Too much.
At least we got the vote in.
Bring a project to the town.
Christian, you cut out for about the last 15 seconds or so.
You're on mute. You're on mute, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
There we go.
Hey.
All right. Internet's trying to get me off as best it can. So having voted on a final decision for Thorndike Place this evening's meetings, there are several changes coming to our board. So we have three members who are stepping down. Steve Revlock has been an associate member since April 2020, is stepping down at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Aaron Ford, our other associate member who joined us in April 2020, is stepping down after tomorrow night's hearings. And they have both served us ably and faithfully throughout the board's most active and demanding period in recent the board and the town are grateful for your service with us here on the zoning board of appeals. And Sean O'Rourke, who joined the board as an associate member back in April of 2017, was elevated to a full member in September of that year, will also be leaving the board in the coming weeks. It's been a great privilege having him serve on the zoning board of appeals for the four and a half years. His wisdom and expertise will sorely be missed. Mr. Revlock had asked if he could say a few words at the end of the meeting, which I will grant him the time to do. And if either Mr. O'Rourke or Mr. Ford would want to make any comments, I would allow them to do so as well. So Mr. Revlock?
Now, since, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, since this is my last meeting, it is an associate member of the ZDA. I just want to say that I'm really impressed at how much of a thoughtful, deliberative and hardworking board this is. Did I mention hardworking? It has been a privilege to to serve with you and and a great learning experience. I'd also like to give special recognition to Mr. Klein and Mr. Hanlon, who've just done a tremendous job. You know, with the with our workload over this year and just managing, just basically keeping, uh, keeping the train moving, so to speak. You two gentlemen are a real asset to the town, and we are lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revlock. Very kind.
I don't have any words prepared or anything, but I I've enjoyed working alongside with all of you. I wish it was not remote and in person, but that's the way it's been. I've learned a ton and had this been in a different part of my career where I had more time to commit to this, I wouldn't leave because it's a it's a good group. And it's a good cause. So thanks for doing it. And I've enjoyed working remotely with all of you. And I'm sure I'll see you around town.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Ford. You can always join up again later.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's been great getting to know all of you. I guess my only regrets been with COVID because I enjoyed our in-person meetings for sure, and it helped all of us as members get to know each other, which was a ton of fun. The amount of work that people do on this board is incredible for a volunteer board. So thank you all. And the amount I've learned from all of you, Mr. Hamlin, Mr. Klein, Mr. DuPont, and even you, Mr. Mills, who I first got to know here in Arlington Little League. So it's been great seeing you again, Kevin. And just thank you all very much. It's been an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
So with that, our traditional ending, thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. Appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting, especially wish to thank Rick Valarelli, Vincent Lee and Kelly Linema for all their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. And tonight especially, thank Jennifer Rate for salvaging this meeting and finding us a new room and getting us up and running again. That was invaluable and much appreciated. Please note that the purpose of the board's recording the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of the proceedings. It's our understanding that recording made by us will be available hopefully on ACMI at some point. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town. Arlington dot ma.us. The email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And if you have not had enough of the zoning board of appeals, we will be back with you tomorrow night at 7:30 on this same channel. To conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for To conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. The second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Vote of the board, Mr. Dupont.
Hi.
Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. O'Rourke.
Hi.
Mr. Revlock.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all very, very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night, Aaron.
See y'all tomorrow.
Take care, everybody.
Good night, Steve.